Meeting of the council come to order. Clerk call a roll.
Counsel Del Solo.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Counsel Mangan. Counsel Marquezzi. Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel Apolitano.
Here.
Counsel Sichetta.
Here.
Counsel Sani. Counsel Simonelli.
Present.
Counsel Capone.
Yep.
Ten members present.
Ten members present. We have already shown due respect to the flag, so we can wave the salute of the flag. However, I would ask that we stand for a moment of silence. We lost two folks. Laurie Kelleher from the school department was cafeteria work at the Webster School and Dr. Cognata, who was a well-known doctor in the neighborhood, served many of the families in the city.
Mr. President, if you may, I apologize. I'm also a neighbor counsel for my community.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, clerk will call the first item. Oh, actually, before we go, we have two quick announcements. Counsel Sani is unable to attend tonight due to previous commitment. As mentioned earlier, Counsel Marquezzi is homesick. So we'll have our clerk read the first item of business.
Item number one, Mr. President, is a public hearing. An order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone's present to all parties interested in the petition from Teleport Communications America, LLC, AT&amp;T, Sienna Engineering Group, Burlington, Mass. is requesting permission to lay and maintain and operate underground conduits with cables to be placed therein under the surface of Hancock Street from existing utility pole 2186 located in the concrete sidewalk to the property of 5 Hancock Street, one four-inch PVC conduit approximately seven feet in length.
Do we have someone from the petitioner?
I do. We have Robert Gilder Day. Is that how you say it?
Yep. Yeah, unless there's an objection, we have him forward for purposes of a presentation, then we can open it up to the general public at that point. Good evening. Welcome. If you could please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Robert Gilder Day. I'm an engineer for Sienna Engineering through our past project management in Teleport Communications.
Okay. Feel free to have a seat. Make yourself comfortable.
I've been in East Bay City Council for six years. Everybody here does.
Thank you very much. Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gilder Day, is it?
Gilder Day, yes.
Is this the pole that's in between a driveway?
I'm looking at the map here.
It's right in between the driveway of...
I don't believe so. I believe if you look at the print DN 001, it'd be a left of what looks like a sidewalk and not really a driveway.
Is this on, when you go to Hancock Street, on the left-hand side or the right-hand side?
Right-hand side as you're coming off Broadway.
Okay, that's the one, yeah. There's actually a garage there, and it's in between the garage and the house, so I'm hoping that's the one you're taking down, because I've been trying to get it down for the last ten years.
Well, I'm not going to be trying to take it down because we really don't own it, but we just want to install a conduit from that pole seven feet into an existing hand hole.
So you're adding to it.
If I may, because it is a public hearing, what I, what the chair recommend is just to have the gentleman explain exactly what it is that they're looking to do, what the purpose of the petition is, and we can open it up to the general public, and then we could have questions afterwards. But whatever the will of the body is, okay. So, sir, if you wouldn't mind explaining exactly what it is that you're looking to do, what you're asking the city council to do with regards to your proposal.
We're placing a new fiber optic cable, and we need to go from pole 2033, which is across the street by 6 Hancock Street, overhead to pole 2... Just... Somebody said earlier that the thing's so small you need a magnifying glass.
It looks like 2186. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes. Then we're going to be going down the pole in the conduit, which has it on this drawing right here, four feet underground, approximately seven feet to an existing hand hole. And from there, we'll be going underground, you know, up the street to feed, I'm not sure which this one is feeding. I know we've been doing a lot of cell tower sites lately, so it may be eventually ending up at a Verizon central office and going to a cell site because of the capacity needed now on the cell phones with TV, you name it, that's on there. So it's basically just to upgrade our infrastructure. And again, it'd be going seven feet from the existing pole, down the pole, seven feet, you know, underground with a depth of 48 inches, be a four-inch PVC conduit.
Okay. Very good.
Oh, sure.
So we'll have you just sit tight right over there. We're going to open up our public hearing, and then the members will have questions.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, members of the audience, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I'm going to ask three times if there's anyone in favor, and then that part of the public hearing will be closed, and then I'll ask three times anyone opposed. We'll close that, and then the matter will come back before the city council. So for the first time, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the matter? Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the matter? This is the public hearing on teleport communications petition. And I would assume the petitioner is speaking in favor, correct? You're speaking in favor of your petition?
Yes, please.
Okay. That portion of the public hearing is closed. Now I'll ask three times if anyone opposed. Is there anyone opposed to the petition? Is there anyone opposed to the petition? Is there anyone opposed to the petition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The matter is now before the body. Sure. If you please come back before the body. Thank you very much. Did you have a question, Counsel Hanlon?
I have two questions, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, fiber optics. What are you transporting over the fiber optics?
Probably telecommunications.
Okay.
Phone calls.
But that's at 5 Hancock Street, and that is a residential area. This is for residents?
Oh, no. This is going basically from point to point. Like I said before, it could probably be going from a central office up to a cellular tower site, which I'm, you know, I'm not aware of. I'm just basically here to do the presentation from the pole, down the pole, seven feet underground to an existing hand hole.
And then where, oh, going to go to a tower?
Possibly, yeah.
That, I think, there's a tower on top of that building, that hotel. Okay, all right.
It could be. I've got so many sites we've been doing lately, it's really hard to, you know, to keep track of them.
So we're going to the manhole. The manhole is already there. That wiring is already there.
Right, and we'll, you know, we'll be installing the fiber optic cable in existing infrastructure underground.
Good. My second question, my second and last question is, the sidewalk you're going to be taking up is concrete.
Correct.
And you're going to be putting concrete back?
We're going to be doing everything according to the bylaws and rules of the city of Everett.
Okay. Is it going to be like flag to flag? I'm not looking for a patch. I'm looking for like from, you know, where the cracks in the sidewalk are. That's called a flag. I'm looking for that much space. Is that what they're going to do?
They'll restore it to better than the original condition.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. No other questions?
Counsel Del Solo.
I'm in favor for it. The only thing is, I'm disappointed with National Grid. When they do their work, once you're done with the sidewalk, I mean, kind of this kind of work also, just they're going to cement the sidewalk when they're done. So when they pull out there with that seven-foot hole, seven-foot trench, you're going to cement the sidewalk and you're done, correct?
Correct.
You're not going to pave it and come back down the road and concrete it.
Oh, no. It'll be done, you know, within, if not the first day to the second day.
Okay.
Be completed. We don't leave anything undisturbed or, you know, potential hazard or anything like that. And it's only, it's only seven feet.
Right, exactly.
And the pads probably four by four.
Okay.
Yeah, so they would do the complete restoration either that day, depending on what, you know, time they get done, and they go back the next day and do that.
Okay, do you know, one more question. Do you know what else is on this pole?
Um, most likely, probably power would be on there. Comcast is probably a local carrier, probably Verizon, and could be some other third-party, Verizon Business, Sprint. I'm really not sure exactly who's, has the pole attachments on that particular pole.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Will you excuse me? Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Can I make a motion to send this to committee?
Thank you very much.
Is there a second on that?
One second.
Can I just?
It's moved in second to, which committee would you like?
License Committee, Ways and Means, right.
Community, oh, licenses?
License.
Oh, so Community and Business Development?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So has been moved in second to refer it to committee. Before we vote, any other discussion? Counsel Del Solo?
On the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Hanlon.
I just, why are we sending it to committee?
The reason why I want to send it to committee, I want to explain, I had been dealing with this for ten years, that Del Solos on Hancock Street have a pole right in the middle of their driveway. Trying to get out of their garage is very difficult. So I don't want, I've been dealing with National Grid. They promised me they were going to move this pole, and they never did. I want to make sure that I go look at it, because I don't want this gentleman to suffer for it, but why add on to something that needed to be moved ten years ago? So what I want to do is I want to go look at the pole to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding it, and that if we send it to committee, it gives me enough time to see if it's that pole or if it's something different.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Did you want to address that? If the membership, he can...
If you were more than happy...
I'd do.
Okay. If we, what?
If you up in the field and look at this particular pole, or the pole you're talking about, see if it's the same one or a different one, I'd be more than happy to meet you out there.
Okay. Or did you want to address the actual location or down the road?
I just want to make sure that she can be talking about a pole.
Why don't we have you?
Why don't you come back on the mic, please?
Yeah.
And put the mic on, because people can't hear you. Thank you.
One of my pet peeves in Ainsbury were double poles and poles that weren't removed in a timely manner from both National Grid and Verizon. That's one of my pet peeves, and I was very forceful when they came for new pole locations. Yes, you can, but, you know, go back and clean it, you know, what you haven't finished yet. But I would be more than happy to meet you out in the street at this particular pole location, 2186, and see if it's the same pole that you're talking about. If it's not, we can go look at that pole and give you my opinion, and I can maybe, you know, make some phone calls on your behalf to National Grid also.
Well, yeah, because National Grid had promised that they were only going to move the pole like three feet over, so it's out of these people's driveway. And this is, I've been working on this for ten years, and it just seemed that they don't, and I've met with them. I met with a lot of people from National Grid there. So I'm not trying to make it difficult for you. Unfortunately, I apologize for that.
Oh, you're not.
But at the same time, I do want to go look at the pole to make sure that we're not talking about the same pole. And so we'll send this to the license committee, and if it's not the same pole, then we'd be glad to grant you...
And again, I'll leave my name and cellphone number with the clerk, in case you want to meet me out there. I'd be more than happy to meet you out there.
If you're going in the back, the secretary will give you my number. You can call me tomorrow, and we can set up an appointment.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel DeFlorio, can I make a suggestion, if it's possible?
Do we have, do we have anything for our guest?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions for our guest? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could just make this, because I second her motion, if you can make this recommendation, if we would, how about just referring it to our next meeting, and in the meantime, instead of going into committee, if it's just a simple meeting the gentleman up there and getting a location, we might just be able to resolve it in a couple of days, counselor, and then have an, and then we can just approve it at the next meeting without trying to put it in committee.
That's fine. I'll rescind my, my motion.
So we have a motion. It's moved in second to lay it on table to our next meeting. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've laid item number one over table to our next meeting.
Thank you.
At this particular point in time, it would be time to open public participation. We'll open public participation. Do we have a sign-in sheet?
Yes, I do.
For that, how many folks do we have?
One.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak public participation? Yeah, okay. Joe, did you want to speak? Why don't you come on up? Have a cheer. Press that button and make sure the light goes green. Just introduce yourself for the record, name and address.
Joel Sandigate, 90 Swan Street, Everett.
Okay, Joe, what would you like to say?
Now, I've been thinking about this whole thing on, I don't like the plan to start out with. I firmly believe that high schools should be senior citizens, and we all know why. We don't have any held handicap in any one of our three units. They were built in 1970, folks. No air conditioning, no handicap units. Okay, the only time they were built was in 1970 by John McCarthy, and we got $25 million to do the hill. All right? The towers had no legal handicap units. Woody Drive has no legal handicap units. Golden Age Circle had, I think, two or three now. We did put a couple in not too long ago. Okay? We all know, I think we've been mandated by the state to stop building elderly handicap units, building senior citizen units. I believe I read that in one of our papers, we were mandated by the state to start getting our rack together and start building. Everybody around us has three or four thousand units. We don't even have three, 500. Don't get excited, folks. All right? And this whole thing, do I like it? Yes or no? We have to start doing something with our downtown areas. Everybody around us is doing it. Right now is a good time, because money is cheap in regard to what he has said. Now, my idea is, we take Norwood Street, we take the roomy house, and the house next door, I don't know what street it is. We take those two pieces. We go down the barbershop all the way down, Jeffrey Jewels, all the way to the viasas, and make one big square. We do a high-rise parking garage. That's where City Hall goes, in my opinion. Okay, phase two, we take the jetters building. We keep the jetters all the way up there, maybe up to the bank. All right? We keep that potted by historical society. They want to build, they build what's inside that unit. And I take on the other side of the street the same way. Keep the circle society, okay? I don't want to take those down unless I have to. Bring that all the way down, the condos down there, and maybe keep the beauty salon. All right? When we're all done with this mess, we have vitalized our downtown area. We brought up to date. City Hall is now empty. City Hall, I mean, City Hall can be down there, old Golden Age, I mean, the high-rise elderly over here, okay? This building is empty by doing all three phases. It doesn't come overnight, folks. I'm going to get 15, 18 years of development. But I think, I'm not an architect. I'm not a brain. I'm just like you people here. I had a foresight. I got up in the morning at 3:00 in the morning for two days and put this on paper. I drew it out. I tried to get audience from there twice yesterday and the day before. I didn't get any satisfaction. You all know who I am. There's no tomorrow with me, folks. I love my city. I always will love my city. And I also believe, we don't have the power, excuse me, you people shouldn't have the power to go borrow $100 million dollars without the people of the city voting on it. I would like to see that mandated as a vote, that the city, that the people of the city vote, that they want to spend $100 million on this, do whatever we want to do. That's all I have to say, folks, and that's it.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Seeing none? It's moved in closed public participation. All in favor?
I'm going to go ahead and ask.
We have closed public participation. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number two.
Item number two is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone's present to transfer $925,349 in budgetary fund balance free cash in the school department account. I'm sorry, item number two, order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone's present to authorize 53 and a half revolving funds and used by many city departments for FY 16.
What's the pleasure of the council? It's moved in second, favorable action. Clerk call a roll.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Apolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani. Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yays, zero nays. You have passed the order. Clerk will read the next, yeah, it is. Clerk read the next item of business, item number three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone's present to transfer $925,349 in budgetary fund balance free cash in the school department account. This is for $850,349 Medicaid reimbursement and $75,000 Boys and Girls Club after-school program.
Counsel DeFlorio.
According to our charter, we have to vote on this in the next meeting, but the $850,000 is something that we have all the time. The $75,000 isn't. So how do we do this?
Sure.
You can make a motion to divide the question and take the two items separately.
Itemize it.
You can divide the question and take...
Take the $75,000.
Yeah, you can take them as two separate items.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to...
Divide the question.
Divide. The question. So the $75,000 will be in two weeks, in favor of recommendation on the $850,349.
Okay, so the motion before us is divide the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. You have divided the question. So now the first item will be the $850,000 reimbursement.
Favor of recommendation on that.
Move second. Did you want to, Counsel Simonelli?
Yes, this Medicaid reimbursement goes back a long way. Started with the McCucci administration, and out of his good heart, he let it go for a couple of years, and now it seems like it's automatic, and I don't think it should be. So I would really like to see someone from the school department come down here and try exactly what this money is and if it's owed to them or not. But I don't, I, we did it as a favor. Now it just seems like they want it all the time. So I'd like to make a motion to bring this to legislative affairs and invite someone from the school department to rectify this. I make that the formal motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
I second the motion.
It's been moved in second. Counsel Apolitano.
Thank you. As one of the few members here that was serving at the time when this first started with the Medicaid reimbursement, just want to understand that this money would not come into the city of Everett in the first place if the school department didn't put in all the necessary paperwork to be able to get the money back from the city. They're only taking the portion of the money that belongs to, that is reimbursing student, you know, school department employees. The rest of this comes to the city. So the thing is, it's not free cash. It's not something that we're giving them out of the favor, out of the goodness of our heart. It's money that only comes into the city because the school department puts in the time in the first place to be able to get that money reimbursed back to the city. They don't take the whole thing. They only take what is obliged them based on their employees, not the, not the other way around. So, I mean, this is, this comes up every time this item comes up, the question of whether we should do it or not. But the bottom line is, if the school department didn't put in the paperwork, the money wouldn't even be there. So I'll be supporting this. I've understood the dynamics of this from its inception. No one's giving any free money away. It's money that they're entitled to, and they're doing the work to get that money back into the city. Okay?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, there are two motions before the body. One is to refer it to committee. The other is favorable action. We will act on the referral to committee first. It's been moved in second to refer this item to the committee of legislative affairs.
It was favorable action.
It supersedes. So on that motion, all in favor referring it to committee, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
That has failed. The motion before the body now is favorable action. It's been moved in second, favorable action. Clerk call a roll.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Apolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
Uh, what are we voting on here?
This is to refer to...
Oh, no.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Seven yays, two nays, Mr. President.
Seven yays, two nays. This failed. You need eight votes on financial, correct?
No, I believe you need eight votes on appropriation.
Well, this is a reimbursement? I'll wait for clarification. We're just going to wait to get a clarification on that. For the folks at home and for the members here, typically, whenever you're dealing with financial matters, you need eight votes. That would be appropriation. In this particular thing, we're trying to see where it's a reimbursement, if it's an exception. It's a transfer. All right, so you just need a majority. You just need a majority. All right, so simple majority. So that has passed. Thank you very much for the clarification. Now, the second half of that question that's before us now is the $75,000. Been moved in second to table it over to the next meeting. All in favor? All opposed? You have laid that part over till our next meeting. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number four.
Item number four is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone's present to transfer $300,000 in budgetary fund balance into master plan account to fund a comprehensive master plan for the city of Everett.
What's the pleasure of the council? I believe we have to either hold this over or refer it to Ways and Means. Counsel Apolitano.
If we could, I'd like to refer this to Ways and Means. I'd like to get a more detailed plan on what the master plan for the city of Everett is. I think a presentation would be in order if the administration sees fit.
I'm sorry.
Counsel DeFlorio.
If we're going to have a presentation, let's do it on a committee as a whole.
Whatever, whatever the will of the body is.
Because unfortunately, it goes to Ways and Means. There's only three or four of us, then it comes on the floor, and there's more questions, so it's better that we all do it together.
I'll withdraw my motion and restate it as a refer it to a committee of the whole.
Okay. Moved in second to refer this item to a committee of the whole. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You've referred item four to a committee of the whole. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone's present appropriation order for FY 2016 city budget.
There is a handful of motions that should go along with this, and unless there's any objection, I would ask our clerk to read them, and if one of the members could put that in a form of a motion.
Motion is to refer it to the budget committee for meetings set by the clerked committees on Thursday, May 28, 6:00 p.m., Monday, June 1, starting 6:00 p.m. Thursday, June 4, starting at 6:00 p.m. Six members shall constitute a quorum unless otherwise specified. Mayor, City Auditor, Budget Director, and Mayor's Chief of Staff be invited to appear at all hearings. Department heads request after following information, the amount expected to be unexpended at year-end from their 2015 budget appropriation. Committee on Budget to report out to the city council for their meeting on Monday, June 28, I'm sorry, June 8. All budget hearing meetings shall be televised, and a copy of city budget published on city's website, copy made available at the Pollin Library in the city clerk's office for public viewing. City clerk advertised for a public hearing for all those interested in fiscal '26 annual budget, which has already been done.
The chair will entertain someone making that in a form of a motion, but you have to repeat it exactly as read. Do we, do we have a motion from the floor? Okay. Do we have a second on that? Okay, it's moved in second to accept the motions as presented. Refer it over to a meeting... Refer it over to a meeting of Committee of Budget with instructions and schedules. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number six.
Item number six, an order sponsored by Council for freight components, President petition for lodging house license for Carrot Task Communities Incorporated to Rashawn Flynn DVA Hancock Hotel at nineteen Hancock Street.
What's the pleasure of the council? Counsel DeFlorio.
Any police reports on that, any problems, any issues?
Mr. Clerk?
We have just received them, and I know the council has not had time to look at them, but we...
Then I make a motion to send this to, uh...
Community and Business Development?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
It's moved in second to refer item number six to Business and Community Development. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, also, if you could make a motion to, um...
Counsel Mangan.
On item number seven, I know it's the same thing, same thing, send it into committee.
Okay, we just need, we just need our clerk to read it.
Item number seven, an order sponsored by Counselor, freight components, President petition for lodging house license from Carrot Task Communities Incorporated, Kirashan Flynn DVA Bill Morehouse at seventy-six Norwood Street.
The motion still stands, Mr. President.
If I may, from the chair, I see someone in the audience wanted to address it. It's up to the body, we can address it in committee, or you can allow the individual to come forward. It is the will of the council.
Yeah, he's here now.
Moved in second to have the gentleman come forward? If you would, just, you wanna press that microphone button to make sure that light is on green? If you could identify yourself for the record and...
Hi, I'm Sean Flynn, I'm a property manager for Carrot's Communities. So I just am here to, you know, entertain any questions that anybody has, or any concerns, or any issues.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I wasn't sure what you, you meant, that it was going to committee, so...
Just so I explain it to you before the members, we do have some members that have questions. When an item comes in front of the body, they could either vote on it favorably, reject it, or refer it to a committee in order to get more information. So I think what had happened here is there were police reports that the council members did not have a chance to look at, so they were looking for additional information.
Okay.
If, we have members here that are ready to ask questions, you can do that. We have Counsel McKinnon.
How are you tonight?
I have...
Thanks for showing up tonight.
Thank you for having me.
The reason why we're doing it is exactly what the President said. He said, what we're doing is, we're gonna hold this over because we didn't have a chance to look at the police reports or anything like that. We normally do have a chance, but we didn't get them until late at night. So that's the only reason it's gone to committee. Once it goes to committee, then we can take a look at it.
Okay, thanks.
And then you'll just, you'll appear at that committee.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
We could just make sure that Mr. Flynn gets invited to the committee.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What we'll do is, we'll figure out when the committee's gonna be, we'll get in touch with you, we'll make sure that you get an invite. That'd be your opportunity to come to the committee and explain and answer any questions the members might have.
Okay, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here. The motion has been made in second to refer to the committee... Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could, I know, I mean, I think it's a good habit we should start getting into is that, no disrespect to the property manager, but I think we should invite the owner, the owners of the properties up, like I said, because, I mean, I think sometimes they have a little bit more information and stuff like that. So I personally would like to see the property owner come up to, you know, 'cause if we do have any specific situations and stuff like that, I wanna make sure that, you know, the owner's here and dress them right to the owner.
Okay.
And they're aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, I...
You don't, don't anymore, you don't have to respond to it. It depends on a lot of different things. I, from the chair, I just, I understand the sentiments, but you have to realize that property owners take on many forms, corporations, partnerships, individuals. What we could do is, as we go forward, if there's an item, specifically request an individual property owner if need be. Usually there's an agent, or it could even be an attorney, someone acting on the behalf, and they usually can answer the questions. It's a good point, Counselor, and we could do it on a case-by-case basis as pieces come up. If we have a property perhaps that is the difficult one, maybe the agent doesn't cut it, we need the owner, but perhaps the agent could resolve concerns and go from there. But it's an excellent point.
I just want to mention, thank you for that, Mr. President. The concern I have is, like I said, for instance, the one up on Hancock Street, I see the ambulances there, I see police cars there all the time now. Could be something that has nothing related to the property itself, but the idea is, is that if we have a committee meeting and then we have questions, I mean, the gentleman may not know, he may know some of the stuff, he may not know all the stuff that's going on, and then it's gonna delay it out even more and stuff like that, and who knows how long this is gonna take the committee for. So that's my, that's my concern, 'cause I'm just in the feeling now, no disrespect to the property manager, but I just, I don't wanna see these types of things in the neighborhoods, and I think we're trying to transform our community, and I don't wanna see these types of places here where they're really not addressing the issues, they're just sugarcoating it, and like I said, and I think, you know, people shouldn't have to be put up with this stuff, and that's, like I said, that's why, like I said, other than the property manager, I mean, I don't know, like I said, I understand it's a corporation, but I'd certainly like to talk to somebody that's, you know, that's running the whole show, but that's, I'd leave it up to the body.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DeFlorio.
I believe the property manager knows more than the owner. I'm sorry, I have to disagree.
More often than not, that's true.
The property manager is the one that does everything. They get the calls, they get the calls if there's a problem, they get the calls if they have to evict someone, they get the calls if they have a bad tenant, they get the calls if something breaks. The owner doesn't even know what's going on, that's why they pay a property manager to take care of that. So to me, let's get the property manager here, they're more knowledgeable. And if there's a problem and the property manager doesn't comply to our rules and we don't like what they're doing, then it's fine to call the owner. But I would, I would definitely not have the owner come to a committee meeting.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Delasola.
I would just recommend, if the owner is available, he can come with the, with the property manager. If he's not available, and he's just coming to answer some questions we may have that he may not be able to answer, that's fine. And if he doesn't show up, then, if he can't answer the question, then it would just be delayed, and it's not, at our fault that he couldn't answer the question.
It's, it's an excellent point, Counsel. This particular item, this is a corporation. So this, this one in front of us is a corporation. It's excellent points made by the body, and we could utilize that going forward, that an invitation to the owner or the agent, and then if questions still linger and the council needs more information, you could always lay it over and hold it till the owner can come in. And it's in the owner's best interest and in the agent's best interest to answer all your questions, 'cause all it's gonna do is tie them up. But the particular piece in front of us tonight, this is a corporation, so the agent is our best bet.
Okay.
Counsel McKinnon.
If we could just do it case-by-case, that would be feasible.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do it. So we have a motion on the floor to refer this to the Community and Business Development Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number eight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a signee here. I apologize, if we could please suspend the rules, take item number nine off the agenda.
It's been moved in second to suspend the rules and take item number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've suspended the rules. Clerk will read item number nine.
Item number nine is communication, Route ninety-nine Smoke Shop, eight ninety-three Broadway, request approval to operate the premises twenty-four hours.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, there is a Mr. Patel in here.
Would you like to have the gentleman before us?
Well, before the gentleman comes before us...
It's up to you, Counsel.
I do have a comment, I am absolutely against this.
Okay.
There's no way any smoke shop should be open twenty-four hours a day in a residential area. The senior citizen center there, Whittier Drive, it's a smoke shop. This is an emergency, it's bad enough that the Tadiskys are open twenty-four hours a day, and when you go there at two, three o'clock in the morning, it's not pretty. As far as I'm concerned, I'd like to have all of them closed at eleven-thirty at night. So I'm definitely against this, but I would give the courtesy to the gentleman to answer any questions.
Counsel Mangan.
I did speak with the owner here early, and I actually went down there, because when I did see this on the calendar, Mr. President, I went down over the weekend and spoke at length down there, and it's actually, it's other, I understand Counsel DeFlorio's concerns with smoke, but they actually have a lot of other stuff in there. One of the big things was that people that are leaving Everett, you know, heading out north, whatever, in the morning, there's nothing on that side of town, like I said, for them to stop at. So that was one of the reasons. But I would like to, if it's, if the, my fellow councils don't object, I'd like to put this into committee and just have people come and at least explain it at length, and certainly at that point, if, you know, if they decide they don't wanna move forward with this, that's fine. But I think, not tie up too much time tonight, I'd like to put it into committee and have the, you know, the gentleman come and be able to speak about it.
Sure. Is there a second on that?
Send the motion.
It's been moved in second for Community and Business Development. On the, on the motion, Counsel?
Yes, I'm definitely against this, too. I've been in there, they got these pipes and everything else, it's like marijuana, they got cigarettes in there, they got rolling papers, they got these huge, big marijuana pipes, I don't care, that's what they are. They want them open all day long, kids going in there and buying those. It's ridiculous, and it should never happen. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion before the body is to refer this to Community and Business Development.
On the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel DeFlorio.
There's only a few of us in this committee, I keep, I keep saying this constantly, okay? And the ones that are on this committee are already against it. So we're gonna go to committee, we're gonna spend two, three hours on the committee, and then we're gonna come to the floor, and the same questions are gonna be asked all over again. This is pretty clear, okay? It's a residential area, there's a school across the street, Little Peach is open down the street twenty-four hours a day. Tadiskys on Main Street. How many more stores do we need open twenty-four hours a day? We should earmark that the only stores to be open twenty-four hours a day should be on Via Beach Parkway for the truck drivers. All the other residential areas should not be open twenty-four hours a day. It's a problem, there's a lot of noise out there. There are houses in the area, there's an apartment building next door, okay? So it is a problem. We're facing the problems every day at stores twenty-four and Tadiskys. So to me, I'm against it, I'm against sending it to committee, and I would ask to vote on it.
If I may, from the chair, we do have, it's whatever the pleasure of the council is, we do have individual petitioners who are here. If you would like to avoid the committee, have them come up, address questions, and you can vote on it this evening, that's fine. If you prefer to refer it to committee, that's fine, too, it's totally up to this body. The clerk just advised me that this is nothing more than a communication. There's not an order attached this. That said, it's up to this body, there's nothing to vote on, it's just a communication, so...
That's why I wanted to go to committee, just that.
Just to discuss it, so you could discuss it here this evening, you could discuss it in committee, it's totally up to this body. Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly understand Counsel DeFlorio's concerns, but, and to say before it even gets in there that, that even tonight, that you're opposed to it before you even let the gentleman... I mean, I don't think that's right, I mean, I think everyone should have their day. I mean, we do have Dunkin' Donuts that are open on Main, this is on a Main Street, this is on Broadway. We have Dunkin' Donuts that are open twenty-four hours. Like I said, we have store twenty-four, we have Little Peach, we have Little Tadiskys, they're all open twenty-four hours.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Delasola, did you wanna, did you have a question?
I just feel, for a couple of minutes, I, he's here now, the owner? Little respect, I think he should come up and say his piece, and let's see what he has to say.
It's totally the will of the body. If you, if you, if you feel that you would, if you feel that you'd be able to give the individuals more time and attention and respect in the committee, you could do that. If you think that there's sufficient time to hear what they wanna say tonight, it's up to the body. It's been moved in second to have Representative before us. And this is motion to refer it to committee. We have two.
So I'll withdraw my motion and then, you know, let the gentleman come up and speak.
Okay. It's been moved in second to have, the petition is before us, all of the, well, the communication individuals before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. If the gentlemen in the audience would like to come forward? Good evening. If you would, just have a seat. If you could just state your name and address, and we have some councils that probably have some questions. Why don't you explain what it is that you'd like to do, and then if there are any questions, the council could ask questions at that point.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Peredash Patel, I'm the owner of Route ninety-nine Smoke Shop, and my petition is to open the premises twenty-four hours. The reason why I ask is, we have had a lot of requests, even from customers and neighbors, 'cause I am more of a convenience also, it's not, I know the name indicates it's a smoke shop, but I have a lot of convenience items in there, which are normal day-to-day items, like we have milk, and we have, you know, food medicine, some snacks, that kind of thing, which, you know, everyone do kind of crave for in the evenings and the nights. There's no other option on that side of the street for anyone who's going towards north. So I've had several requests, and which is the reason why I'm requesting. If there's any questions that anyone might have, I can...
Counsel McKinnon.
What's your current operating hours now?
We are five-thirty a.m. to eleven P.M.
To what time, eleven?
Eleven P.M., yes.
And just a quick question, so you're looking to open up earlier in the morning? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, more, more early, I've had more requests, more twenty-four.
You wanna do twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours.
What if you couldn't do twenty-four hours? What would be feasible?
I can do up to, like, usually...
What's the most traffic in the morning?
Most traffic...
You're going into my committee and other councils that are on that committee, so this is the type of question.
Four, four a.m. is when usually a lot of traffic starts, and usually up until one, one a.m., two P.M. timeframe, I always get customers.
So if we did something like maybe a four a.m. to, say, like a twelve possibly, something like that, would that be helpful?
Sure.
All right, and you realize that there is an elderly center, a school adjacent?
Yes, yes, yes.
Has there been any problems with that, do you have any?
No, I mean, I, I'm very strict with my operation, I understand it's a smoke shop, so I don't allow anyone under the age of eighteen to enter.
Do you actively card?
Yes, I actively card, I haven't had any...
There's no police reports right now?
I haven't had no violations for any, any kind.
See, we would have to send this to our clerk, and he would do an investigation on it, and then they would come before us again.
I understand.
Okay, so everything's clean there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? Counselor Del Sol.
Is a quick question. Is a store across the street open 24 hours? Do you have the variety?
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Simonelli.
Yes, thank you. Phil, you present to the owner. You know, in front of your store, you've got these pipes, big pipes, everything else, you know. Do you have to have those things like in the window?
I don't believe I have...
Big pipes, you know, and this, what they really are, is a cover-up for marijuana-smoking device. You know that.
They're intended for tobacco use.
Yeah, right.
But I don't, I don't have anything on the window, like there's the front...
Well, we got them inside, well, you go in there, I've been there, and they're all lined up outside. I mean, right in the window, displayed, seeing.
Are you talking about, Counselor, as soon as we enter the store on the right?
Well, I'm just talking right around the window, main window.
The front.
All lined up. All different kinds.
As we enter the store, Counsel, on the right side, I have a table for customers where they can sit and scratch...
These are right in the window.
This is right in the front window, yes. As soon as you park, like, it's in the front, there's a table for customers to sit and, you know, scratch lottery tickets or read newspaper.
But can they smoke tobacco in those?
No, 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 they cannot.
And then you also, but you also sell rolling papers. It's like a, it's almost like years ago, we used to call them head shops, years ago.
Right.
And now you wanna open up a place, which is very, I think it's just illegal to even, even have your store. You sell rolling papers, you sell screens, you sell all that drug finaglia.
The rolling papers, again, are designed for tobacco, like, we do sell bags of tobacco?
Okay, I know what you're saying, but it's just you're covering up the, okay, you sell milk and everything else. But it's just cover-up to do your drug business. Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, sir, I want to apologize to you, but I am definitely against every store being open 24 hours a day, not just yours. So I just want to clarify that, okay? I just feel that 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, good people aren't out at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock. Okay, so I apologize, but I have to tell you how I feel, and it's not just about you, it's about all the stores in the city. Thank you.
Excuse what a customary thing is.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Accept the communication, place it on file.
It's up to the body.
Let them tweak it, let them bring it back in front of us. Okay? Let them, let them, let them tell us what they want, exactly what they want. They go from 24 hours, now they want to go to less, whatever. Tell us exactly what they want, let it come in front of us, and then we'll decide.
Is there something for them to... Let me ask our clerk.
Yeah, this, we have, the City Council has no say unless it's to be open 24 hours.
Okay, so short of that, it's part of a license process?
No, there are extra hours. I apologize. I don't have the ordinance book in front of me. No, there are extra hours as well. Yeah, I think the best idea is to have them come up with a real plan. Come to my office, I'll draw up a petition that they can present, as an actual petition.
So we, I'm just gonna ask some clarification direction from the clerk. Would it be to accept and place on file, or to refer, and then let them just start?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll get them an actual petition, actual, so they can petition for extended hours.
Okay, Mr. President, I make the motion that we accept the communication and place it on file.
Second? It's been moved in second to accept the communication and place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number eight.
Item number eight, communication petition called for education, diabetes, melitus, feral grades, K-12, in the City of Everett, signed by a list of 50 students from the Pioneer Charter School at 51 Summer Street.
The chair would accept the motion to refer to the Health Department and the School Department. Is your second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to refer this item to the Health Department and School Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have so moved. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 10.
Item number 10, order sponsored by Council, Freight Coopones, President Committee of the Hall Report on Order to Submit the Lower Broadway Urban Renewal Plan to Department of Housing, Community Development Final Improvement with favorable recommendation.
Fable action on the order?
Is there a second?
Make a motion, we accept the committee report first.
It's been moved in second to accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's been moved in second, favorable action. Clerk, call a roll.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan. Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone. Eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 11.
Item number 11, resolution sponsored by Council, Michael Marquesi, that the great general court considered staffing a statewide law requiring all fire hydrants to flag them within months with fluorescent highly visible reflective seven-foot rod flags to ensure emergency crews can locate them at night or in the snow, and to assist no foul drives in highway vehicles personnel to see and avoid damage to hydrants and/or vehicles and their operators.
Make a motion to refer to the next meeting, if the sponsor was not here.
Moved in second to refer this item to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred item number 11 to the next meeting. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 12.
Item number 12, order sponsored by Council, Freight Coopones, President, to adopt the amended administrative code in accordance with section 5-1 of the Home Rule Charter.
Fable action on the order?
It's been moved in second, favorable action. Clerk, call a roll.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 13.
Item number 13, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Council, Freight Coopones, President, favorable committee on Ways and Means Report, City Council appropriate the amount of $17,397,500 to pay costs of the various items of the fiscal 2016 capital improvement program.
Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to move favorable action on the, on the amount of money that they're looking for, with minus $3 million. The $3 million would be for the expenses to use to study the new high school. And I think that we need a lot more information on that one particular item. We have no problem with the rest of this, and, you know, the $14 million, $397,000 could just go, you know, but we would like, I would like anyway to have that so that we could really look at that much more clearly than what we saw. We saw some, a lot of good things that they showed us, and they showed us things of what was in different places and so on and so forth, but obviously something that was meaningful to Everett, you know, and everything looked pie in the sky, looked very, very nice, but I want to see homemade pie. So with that, I'd like to get the $3 million referred back to the committee on Ways and Means and approve the rest of it.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second to reduce by $3 million. That was earmarked for the City Hall review, and refer that back to Ways and Means. So let's start, let's start there. The chair, the motion to divide the question.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we, that we divide the question, separating the $3 million from that, because, again, I agree with Counsel Hamlin. Saw a lot of great things. It's a great-looking presentation, but it just opened other questions, and I don't want to see it die, so I think we should, my motion would be to separate the two so we can vote on the remaining bond items this evening, and then have the administration come back and give us more details on the $3 million for the old high school conversion.
Is there a second? Our clerk has made a suggestion, and let me just relay that, and if I don't relay it correctly, you can jump in and correct me. So where it's a capital improvement item, the clerk has suggested perhaps we amend this, reduce it by $3 million, and just pass the bond as, where it's broken down, and then allow the administration to submit another piece down the road. Did I do that all right?
As long as that fits all right, Mr. President, as long as we can still do that as capital improvement.
Mr. Chairman, I just don't want to start another $3 million item on our agenda. I mean, I would just like to say, this is something we have, and it's working. I don't want to go back to square one with it. So I think if we, if we just do the 14, and I'll do whatever our clerk says we can do, you know? We tend to... But I don't want to lose the $3 million.
Okay, okay. So I guess we either have to vote on the whole thing or strike the $3 million?
So why don't we strike out the $3 million, have the administration re-submit it next agenda?
Okay, whatever the will of the body is.
So the motion would be to cut this down to $14,397,500.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's moved in second to reduce this item down by $3 million. Clerk, well, actually, yeah, clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Chairman, this is favorable action on the $14 million, correct?
Let me ask, did I, I'm bouncing back and forth. Did I ask to amend it? We did not put that before the body? Okay, yes.
Let's make that in the following motion, Mr. Chairman, amend it to the proper amount, $14 million.
The second, it's been moved in second to amend the item to reflect the $3 million reduction. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? On the piece as amended, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. The clerk will read the next item of business, item number 14.
Item number 14, is an order sponsored by Council, Freight Coopones, President, favorable committee on Ways and Means Report, that the City appropriate the amount of $2,888,000 for the purpose of paying costs of sewer and system infiltration and inflow projects.
Counselor Sichata. Counselor Sichata.
Make a motion, we accept the committee report.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have to rec, the report. Counselor Sichata, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to have the auditor come before us on this. I want to ask a couple of questions on it.
Make a motion, we have the auditor before us, second.
It's been moved in second to have the auditor before us. Rich, please introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, Richard Viscay, City Auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Sichata. When we were going over the enterprise budget, there were, I believe, $2,000,000 left in reserve. I don't know if you wanted to call it free cash, whatever. Is that money gonna be used for this, or you're leaving that there, and this is new money?
No, there was, we had certified retained earnings of $259,000.
Oh, $259,000.
And at the last council meeting, I believe you appropriated $200,000 of that to fund sewer and stormwater repair projects. This is a bond of, this is an MWRA program for info and infiltration, of which we get just about half of that as a grant, and the other half is borrowing, so it's a, it's a different piece, and it's a part of the MWRA INI program.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Excuse what a customary thing is.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Rich. What's the pleasure?
Second.
Moved in second, favorable action. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 15.
Item number 15, favorable committee on Ways and Means Report, the City appropriate the amount of $1,500,000 for the purpose of paying costs of an elementary school feasibility study with respect to the construction of a new elementary school, a location determined in the course of the conduct of said feasibility study.
Accept the communication, placed on file. It's been moved in second to accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fable action on the order.
Second.
It's been moved in second, favorable action. On the piece, any discussion? Counselor Simonelli.
Yes, I think this, this $1,500,000 is an awful lot of money to be getting in just a feasibility study for an elementary school. Of course, it'll more afford the school, but I think this price is just outrageous, and who knows? You could probably build a quarter of a school atop that money, so I'd be definitely against this money. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
No.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Eight yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, one nay, you have passed the order. Clerk, read the next item of business, item number 16.
Item number 16, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Council, Freight Coopones, President, favorable committee on Ways and Means Report, City appropriate the amount of $325,000 to pay costs of purchasing various items of enterprise department equipment.
Motion to accept the committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second to accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fable action on the order?
Second?
Second motion.
It's been moved in second, favorable action on the order. Clerk, call a roll.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 17.
Item number 17, is an order sponsored by Council, Freight Coopones, President, to transfer $94,066 from the budgetary fund balance into the following city accounts, the funds salaries and expenses, to newly created officer gaming accountability development for the remainder of the fiscal year. Salaries $67,500, expenses $26,566.
Counselor Palatano.
Thank you. Can we ask Mr. Viscay to come up? Make that as a motion.
There's no objection. We'll have Mr. Viscay before us. Thank you, Rich. Counselor DePalatano.
Thank you. Through the chair. Viscay, I mean, I have no issue with the salary. I understand, I have a better understanding with the structure there, and I have no issues with that. Any possibility you can give us just a little closer figure on the expenses, as we had asked the last time?
Honestly, I haven't extracted out all of the expenses, and if that amount doesn't suit you, I can assure you that whatever you deem to appropriate there, we will make sure that we allocate the costs. Again, this is more of a, an exercise in trying to consolidate all the expenses we incurred at the date, so we have a smooth transition and asking for the reimbursement. But Dave and I are meeting tomorrow to kind of cull through all the expenses and plan to submit something to the WIN group, so, you know, in the spirit of trying to make this as easy as possible, if you want to recommend a smaller amount, we will make it work. Otherwise, we'll just leave the costs where they were appropriated in the first place, and we'll pull it together. But at the end of the day, whatever costs that aren't used from that appropriation will certainly be turned back to free cash.
Do you have anything else, Counselor?
No, I appreciate, you know, his candor on this. I mean, again, my goal was just to get a more accurate figure, but given the budget and everything else that's going on, I also respect that, you know, Viscay's got a lot on his plate right now. So I don't think that's an unreasonable amount. I just wanted to have a more accurate figure.
Yeah, we're working toward it, for sure.
Yeah, in lieu of that, I mean, I'm fine.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKinnon.
I just, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Chairman, who's, who got it?
Counselor McKinnon.
I'm sorry.
You're on deck.
You want me to yield if you can? All right. I just have a couple of questions. When this was, when was this actually developed, this position? Because I know that we were going back and forth in committee about it. We were trying to figure out different things.
I think the actual position itself was developed December of 2014, and the idea of bringing it forward to the council to have it adopted came afterward, and of course, we got into some debate on how it should have been presented as such. I've never created a budget in the middle of a fiscal year, so it's kind of a new concept. I've never created a budget in the middle of a fiscal year, so it's kind of a new concept. You know, this whole wind proposal and, and development is, is new to all of us, so, but this position's been created and enacted since December of 2014.
Okay. And this, this position here, you're going to try to recoup funds from the wind project people?
Well, per the host agreement, all associated funds with the, the permitting of the, of the development is reimbursable and that's primarily what this position is in charge of doing is, you know, steering this, this project to its completion.
Okay. And is that at 100% we're going to get this back or no?
We're going to ask for every nickel that we think is regard to the permitting process of the wind development for sure.
For this position as well?
For this position and for every expend, any expenditure that we have with regard to what we feel is related costs to the permitting of this project, we're going to, we're going to go after.
Okay. And then they can actually say, they can come back, they can make a counter offer for this position.
I suppose so. Again, we, we, this is a brand new concept and we're, and we're trying to work with the wind people and Dave can certainly probably speak more of it because it's his day-to-day operation. But the idea is that we, in lieu of a building permit fee, all of the costs that we've incurred trying to get them to build this project is, is reimbursable and developing that and how we approach that and how we allocate, you know, my time and specific the promised time with regard to how all this works is something that we're in the process of development. As a matter of fact, we're, we're meeting consistently on it, trying to, to refine it.
Will, will we be creating a new position for Assistant City Solicitor being gone to this position?
We, in the budget proposed, we have, we have appropriated money to keep the Assistant City Solicitor position with the idea that Dave would become the head of the gaming budget and then we would be able to backfill the city solicitor position, yes.
Okay. So that'll be creating a new job there. And then we have, what, is there two other individuals that are going to be on part of this gaming?
Just a, a director and an admin person, so basically a two-person department and that's, you'll see it in that budget book, if you go to the Fund 690, you'll see it. And just to be clear, the, the creation, the creation of a position or two positions is a net zero effect because again, we're, we're fully expecting to be reimbursed for all charges with regard to that. So I don't want it to look like we're adding two positions when we're, we're netting, it's a zero net cost. I mean, I suppose we're adding the positions, but it should be a net zero cost.
I have, I just have one question. What if we're not reimbursed at the full compensation rate that we're asking for? What if they come back and say, no, we're going to compensate you at half that?
I don't have a great answer for that right now, but I don't think we, I don't think we're.
We're rolling the dice.
We're not, no, no pun intended, no, well, the, the, the host agreement specifically says we're entitled for reimbursement for all applicable costs and by creating this budget and creating the positions where as opposed to trying to pull expenses out of 30 different budgets in the city, we're trying to consolidate. So this is a streamlined and smooth process. Again, being the first time we've ever done this, we're trying our best to put forward something and we're not going to put forward something that we don't fully expect to be reimbursed for, especially with regard to the, these are direct costs. It's not as if we're saying, oh, 40% of my time is allocated to this and you owe me 40% of my, these are direct costs we're talking about. So I don't anticipate any, any big fight over, over this portion of it at all.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Hamlin.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of the questions asked and answers, but I do want to ask, just, just to point out that the salaries and the expenses that we see will be doubled for next year and if we don't spend all of that, that comes back to the city anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay. And we will probably most likely have an office for the gaming, are we going to be called the commission or a committee, whatever, whatever? Who's it going to be called?
It's the Office of Gaming Accountability Development, yes, sir.
So that department will have an office someplace in the building?
Yes, sir.
So even that, we'll charge them rent for that too, right?
We're going to try to get every dollar that we put out.
There you go. I have no further questions. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes, I'm really, I'm sorry, but I didn't really like the way the management presented this as, as of, by not presenting it to the council and it, and this was ongoing and then we got involved in it halfway through and it seemed like it should have been directed up front with us, with this thing. So, and we're not even sure that we're going to get this money back. I know you created a new job and I have nothing against the person having this job, but I just don't think that it was done right and I'll have to vote no.
Are there any questions for Mr. Vizque? Counsel Hamlin. Are there any other questions for Mr. Vizque? No, we'll have, thank you, Richard. If we could please have Dave Rodriguez before us. Dave, you could please just identify yourself on the record.
Good evening, Dave Rodriguez, Assistant City Solicitor.
Thank you. Counsel Hamlin.
Oh, John, if you could please, Counsel, I'm sorry, if you could please put your microphone on so folks are home.
Chairman to you, the, I read the newspaper about the, the department being formed and it said that you would be reporting monthly to, I don't know, those in authority or something like that. Okay. Will we also be getting that report?
I, I think what you saw in the paper was that we're going to be hosting monthly update meetings for the public to come up to City Hall. We had our recent, we're going to be doing it on the third Thursday of every month. We want folks to remain informed and we want folks to have the best information that we can possibly give them all the time and be able to answer any questions that they might have. We understand it moves very quickly in that it's not always in the news. At least the work that we do isn't always in the news, so we want to make sure that people know what's going on, that we're moving forward, that things are progressing nicely. So we did have that first meeting last Thursday, it was, it was attended by a few folks, we had a great discussion about the status of the project, what's going on with other communities, what's going on with the, with the, with the process at the state level, and it's just another way that we can remain informed. Just by way of, and I'm not, I certainly don't want to mince words with, with Rich, the, the amounts that were included for the transfer were not, when it says expenses, was not necessarily expenses from other departments or other things, they were departments, they were departmental expenses that we would be able to do outreach, we'd be able to set up websites and buy letterhead and things like that. That's what the purpose of those expenses were and, and, you know, join professional associations and subscriptions to professional, to, to industry, industry publications that we're able to keep an eye on how other cities and towns relate to this industry that's new to us, it's new to Massachusetts, so we have to be informed and we have to educate ourselves and we've taken ourselves to school in a lot of ways on what it means to host a casino inside a city or town. That's what those expenses were. We're designed to, any expenses that a normal department would have, they've got to buy pens and they've got to buy paper and they've got to buy letterhead and business cards and all these things that relate to government, all the things, to, 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 to do all the functions that government needs to do in order to be effective. That's what those expenses were, we're designed to do. What we're going to look at this as, and these are conversations I've had with many individual counselors, but one that I'm happy to have i- in general, is that we're treating this kind of like an enterprise. We can't create an enterprise fund for, for general government functions, we can only do it for certain things, but it doesn't mean we can't set up something that looks very much like an enterprise for accounting purposes. And we want to make sure that when we look for reimbursement, and the host community agreement, to our credit, is, is, was a historic document. It was, it was, it was the, the benchmark by which all other documents were set for the, for this process throughout the Commonwealth. And we knew that we couldn't charge a full building permit fee because we didn't, first of all, we didn't know what the hard costs were going to be on, on construction, we didn't know what would be applicable, and we also knew that the courts have ruled that we can't charge a building permit fee in excess of what it actually costs us to permit something. But we also knew that we had a lot more to do outside of just ISD issuing a building, looking at a set of plans and issuing a building permit because it's way more complex than this. It's, it's the largest single-phase economic development project in the history of the Commonwealth. No one's ever done it before and we, hopefully we'll see it again, might not hear and ever it, but we'll, we might see it again once or twice in our generation. So we, we knew that other departments were going to play a role in doing this and we wanted, we knew that there were going to be costs associated with that. So let's use this office. In last September, when wind was granted a conditional license to operate a category one gaming facility, we had to get through the referendum effort, we had to get through question three, and shortly there, shortly after question three failed, some staff, Jamie Erickson and I, we looked at each other and says, okay, how do we do it? So we put a proposal together with the mayor in the form of a memo that outlined the function of this office to quarterback this process on behalf of the city. And he, and it was neither me or Jamie advocating for the job, but the mayor looked at me and says, okay, you've got it. If you want it, you've got it. And so from that moment forward, and that was last December, I've been running with the ball and I've been doing that job as well as fulfilling duties as an Assistant City Solicitor, so wearing a bunch of hats and juggling, juggling a bunch of balls and doing the best we could to make sure the, the process moved forward. That's when you saw that in the newspaper. And Counsel Capone, President Capone and I have had this conversation, certainly was never meant as an affront to this council and it certainly wasn't meant as, as an offense to this council. And we, we got a little bit of ahead of ourselves because we're, we have to move very fast sometimes. This is a function that's been fulfilled by the administration for the last 30 months and we made a commitment to the people of the city, we made a commitment to this council and we made a commitment to ourselves to make sure that this once-in-a-generation opportunity does not go wasted and that we fulfill our promise to make sure that it's successful and deliver all the benefits that we were able to negotiate. That's the genesis of this project, it was never meant as anything else. So that's, that's my, and this, this, this process has become complicated, it's become confusing, it's become conflicted and that's unfortunate, but this is my mea culpa, this is my effort to clear the air and to, to ensure this council that our intentions were never anything but pure and making sure that the best information, and Counsel Del Solo put it, put a great item on the agenda for us to come before you and give you an update every three months, we'll give you an update every three days if, if you want it because that's our job. And we've done, we had dozens of public meetings, we traveled from, to the Connolly Center, to the high school, to every public park that we could go to, standing on street corners to get people the best information because we understand the importance of it. So to, to speak to that point, we're going to be available to give any updates to the commission, to the, to the public, to you, to anyone at any time, that's the function of this office.
That report that you said about Counsel Del Solo, that's still floating around here someplace, I don't think that's passed, I think it's still in the committee somewhere, you know?
It is, I think it is and I think it's going to come up every couple of months and we'll come and we'll talk about the project.
But the thing is, you know, I, I go to a, a lot of the, every United Wind meetings and so forth and I'm hearing their side of the story and I like to hear our side of the story, you know, know the same thing and just to make sure that they coincide with one another.
We've got one, we've, we've got, blame me, we've got one and we've, we've enjoyed a extraordinary relationship with wind so far. But it's not without, and it's, it's like any close friendship or, or family, it's, it's not without its, its disagreements and it's not without its bumps in the road, but we keep our eye on the ball towards, towards the ultimate goal.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Assistant Solicitor. On the piece, it's been moved and seconded favorable action, clerk call a roll.
Counsel Del Solo.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel Maegan.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eight yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, one nay, you have passed the order. Clerk will read the next item, item number 18.
Item number 18, resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sacheta, due to the fact that state of mass is not going to receive as much federal relief fund for winter storm relief from the federal government as asked for by the Massachusetts, by Massachusetts Governor, would ask the city auditor and the city services director appear to inform the city council as to how much it cost the city of revenue this past winter for snow plowing and removal, also how much we had in our budget for this and we will get the additional money required.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes, could I have Richard Vizque before us, please?
Well, the, the motion is to have Rich before us, Rich come before us. Under the charter, you're entitled to seven days, but it is your decision whether or not you're prepared to answer it or if you would appreciate more time. I'll leave that with you.
I'm happy to answer any question that I can answer correctly and I'll give you a rain check on anything I don't have with me in my noggin at this point.
Is that acceptable to you, Counselor?
That's fine. I, I, first of all, I've gotten some answers from this booklet you sent me already.
Oh, I'm glad.
It tells me that we spent two and a half, 2.7 million dollars on snow removal this year.
Well, we actually spent over 3 million, but we did have a budget of 350,000, so the net deficit's around 2.7 million, yes, sir.
The budget at 350, which is what the mayor requested last year.
That's right.
And you tell me that 600,000 of this is going to be reimbursed by FEMA, but that's not the case anymore, as you probably read in the papers, is that correct?
Well, the amount of 600,000 honestly is, is an amount that I believe that we are entitled to, at least when we submitted our paperwork for the four, they basically had us give information on four consecutive storms over four weeks. Each one of those storms, we incurred about $450,000 worth of expenses. Now, subsequent to believing that, we thought there might be a month-long period where FEMA would allow for reimbursement. I've got some more information. I went to the FEMA headquarters with, with DPW acting director, also with, not Chief Butler, but one of the deputy chiefs over there and got some information and, forgive me, I, I don't have all the facts, but basically there are certain events that happened within a 48-hour period that you can get reimbursed for and that's your snow plowing, your snow hauling and your, and your snow dumping. And then there's other items that, so the, let me back up for a second. The only storm they're allowing for reimbursement from is the first storm. So you got that 48-hour window. However, they've given some guidelines that allow you to get reimbursed for additional stuff. For example, the first storm, maybe put two feet of snow on a roof, subsequent to that, we had another four feet. So shoveling off roofs to get that, they're considering that as an allowable expense because you basically have to shovel four storms to get to that initial first storm. So there are eligible costs for shoveling roofs, any damage that happened to any of the city's equipment, any of the city's property, all that stuff doesn't fall within the 48-hour. The 48-hour only talks about hauling, plowing and, and removing snow, so we have to look at what we incurred for costs because you could actually move that 48-hour window to a time later than June, January 26th to 28th because we may have incurred more costs over 48-hour period when we had to actually physically move snow and those costs, let's just say those are 480,000 and, and the plow was only 400,000, we may be better served picking a different 48-hour window. So all of that information we have, we're going to cull through and, and come up with our best scenario, but there are certain expenses that are reimbursable regardless of the time and that has to do with any damages to roofs or facilities or equipment, et cetera. So, long story short, the 600,000 dollar number is, a, a number I feel is, is attainable, but that, that number could change dramatically once we start to tally it up. We're talking, again, over 3 million dollars worth of invoices over maybe a month or six-week period, so it's a lot of detail and they require, they require plenty of backup for this, so we have to basically cull through every invoice and all the snow shoveling, all the, any equipment we damaged hitting trees, stomps and curbs and et cetera. So again, just like with the wind stuff, we're going to try to get every dollar we think is applicable with regard to the guidelines they've given us, so I hope that helps answer the question.
It helps me somewhat. Beyond that, I read here in this pamphlet you gave me, we're going to be about 2 million dollars in the hole approximately.
Assuming that the 600,000 is, is reimbursable, the net would be about 2.1 million.
Yeah, 2.1 million. Okay, now, it tells me that we're allowed to write this off over a period of so many years, right up to 2019, at 250,000 a year. Now, is that going to be in our budget each and every year for that write-off?
I think the way it reads, I'm sorry if it's confusing, is that actually the Department of Revenue has come out with guidelines that's going to allow municipalities to raise that deficit over three years, so you can essentially amortize it. So if we have a 2.1 million deficit at the end of this fiscal year, instead of having to raise 2.1 million as part of the 16 tax rate, we can raise 700,000, 700,000, 700,000. So they're allowing municipalities to spread that pain over three years. So as part of the forecast, what I did is I took the 700,000, assuming we might have to come up with 700,000 for fiscal year 16, and then for 17 and 18, I assumed the 250,000 deficit plus the 700,000 of the prior year, so it really would be about 950 and 950, I'm assuming, would be the deficits in the fall into fiscal years. Again, this is somewhat, somewhat of a, it's a, it's a pro forma type situation. I, I hope that getting close to the end of the year, if we have some available funds within other departments, I may propose that we transfer some to soften the blow of the snow and ice deficit, but for purposes of a five-year forecast, I try to lay it out.
That's what my next question was, we wouldn't take this from free cash, would we? Because we've only got a, according to what we spent tonight on the free cash, we had 2.7 million, we're taking 1.7 million away, so we're only going to have about a million dollar free cash.
Yeah, it may not be for free cash, but it could be from other departmental budgets that may have a surplus for one reason or another, there are certain appropriations that we might, at the end of the year, we have the ability to move money between accounts with the department's approval and then the approval of the council. So as we get close to the end of the year, I would like to try to whittle away at that if it's possible, otherwise we will, we'll just raise it in accordance to the Department of Revenue guidelines for, for such.
In other words, if we don't raise it from surpluses, we're going to be paying for this in our budget for the next three years?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and thank you for the courtesy, Rich, we appreciate it. What's your pleasure, Counsel?
Referred back to sponsor.
Moving second for item 18 back to sponsor, all in favor? All opposed, you refer to 18 back to sponsor. Clerk read the next item of business, item number 19.
Item number 19, resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sacheta, city, consider